Seven thirty-one. And the first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the January second Region Nine Board of Education Special Meeting, and the January twenty-first Joint Boards of Education Regular. Look for motions on those minutes.
So you want to take them one at a time, or?
Um, yeah, why don't we do them one at a time? So let's do the Region Nine meeting first, and the Joint Meeting seconds.
Move to approve the January second, Mina.
I'll second that.
Motion to approve any discussion changes on the January second minutes? All right, none, all in favor?
Okay.
Any astings? All right, then, motion on the January twenty-first Joint Board Meetings Minutes.
So move.
All right, have a second.
Second.
Any discussion on those minutes?
I have comments and corrections.
All right.
Just so, um... So, I think whenever we do a... I know we have a, we have a new recording secretary putting on the hat. Whenever we have a vote that's not unanimous, usually we put the member who was opposed in parentheses next to, um, the vote for, for your purposes. Also, under discussion and possible action, discussion of central office budget.
So, sorry, did you want to make a correction, or were you just making a point?
I am making, uh, suggested corrections and additions, yes.
Okay.
So I think that should be added.
All right, and the name, it would be your name, yes?
Uh, yeah.
Opposed?
Probably be me.
All right, so that's in for the public, and the page two, uh, second motion, um, following the five to one. The host is Mr. DeGustino.
And then, under discussion possible action, discussion of the central office budget. It says an initial discussion took place as to whether or not executive session needed to be called. And then it has a sentence that says, after consulting board bylaws and central office administration in attendance, it was decided to proceed in regular session. And I would suggest striking that because it's neither a board bylaw thing or a consulting with administration, topic. It's basically whether or not we wanted to hold the discussion in public or to invite, um, those parties into executive session. So it really had nothing to do with our bylaws, and it didn't really have anything to do with the central office administration in attendance. So I just would suggest striking that, um...
Okay, I'm, I'm all right with adding one other discussion. So, um, striking after consulting board bylaws and central office administration in attendance. That sentence now would start, it was decided.
I guess just leave it as...
Yeah.
...proceed in regular session.
Good.
And then it's a further discussion of central office budget. It says, the last sentence says, another discussion on the percentage of increase of salary and annuity for the superintendent of schools took place. A two percent increase on both was decided upon, and so I don't know what both refers to.
I had reviewed that also. I think it's reference to both salary and the annuity.
So does a two percent increase on top of the restoration of the annuity?
We had had discussion that the overall increase was calculated as well as the base salary, or the, the base, the sal- the salary itself. That section of the contract refers to both the annuity and the base salary as base compensation.
So the three chairs were recommending a two percent increase, not only on the base salary compensation, but also on the annuity, which is a separate compensation in the contract?
It's part of base salary, part contract.
Does that also include the, um, additional compensation, which originally was for medical benefits, but is also when there's a two percent on that as well?
No.
So why is there on the... Not time for a discussion, I just, I, I, I wonder what that reference was for.
Well, maybe instead of both, we put base, would that satisfy?
It's fine, I was just confused, um...
No, no, but, so, I'll clarify, instead of saying increase on both the salary and the annuity, just on the base, two percent increase on the base. I think that's fine.
That's fine.
It's on the base salary. So striking on both and including on base salary.
And then, under board member comment, I'm gonna speak from any... I don't think she just wanted the buses to come later at JVHS. I think there was a reason for them coming later, which...
My comment was, was more that, um, that I've heard a lot of talk about studies and things. I, I don't believe we need a study. I believe this is a problem that is completely about money. And, and my, so my comment was that we need to get at our checkbooks if we want to make the start time later, um, at the end of the day. And, and that there may be ways that we can tweak it a little bit in the meantime, but I'm not definitely advocating for that. I'm saying that there may be ways that we could have tweaked it so the buses aren't pulling in here at five oh seven.
Right.
For a seven thirty start. But that's still gonna cost money.
Yes, so did you have a suggested way? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead, I, I didn't know if you're looking to change the comments, or if you're con- you're okay with your comment.
I, I, you know what?
It seems out of context, but it's fine, you're happy with it.
Yeah, I, I, I would like there to be, but yeah, it's fine the way it is, it's not...
Okay, and then the last thing is, it's submitted by, and, uh, again, historically, the Secretary of the Tribe Board Meeting Minutes aligns with the Chair of the Tribe Board. So that would be, Juliette would be the recording secretary for the minutes. It's not a collaboration of three secretaries. I think it can become arduous and you end up where you have crazy sentences that are added throughout. It's better to have it under one person, so I would...
So you suggest you strike?
Strike the other two and just leave Juliette submitted on.
All right.
Why that is?
That is our minutes for our board, so they find...
I wonder what the other boards are saying when they approved our version of them.
Well, they've always been that way, they've never been...
It doesn't matter.
So that's why I just...
All right, any other changes?
No, I think I've rewritten them now.
Not all of them, there are a few others. All right, any other changes, discussions, or with the Jalom motion? Mike and Cheryl, you're okay as amended, as we discussed.
Yep.
All right, and all in favor of the January twenty-first Joint Meeting Minutes as amended? Say aye.
One abstention.
One abstention. All right, thank you. Now, moving on to the next item, student comment.
A promise to be succinct, since it seems like we're on a very tight schedule today. But, so if you'd like to read out the, um, if you'd like to read the successes of our art students and some of our debate tournaments, feel free to read in the, in the noteworthy news section. Just for our upcoming event at seven, um, main, uh, one of the big important things is on an upcoming Saturday, February the eighth, Barlow will be hosting the Connecticut State STEM Foundation Science Fair for the first time. So feel free to come in and check out any of the science projects there. It'll, it will be hosted here at Barlow, it starts at seven AM. And the College Initiations Panel will be here, and the Library Learning Commons from seven to eight thirty, following that on February twelfth. And then we have some upcoming early dismissals and no school for our February break and our President's Day. If there are any questions about, um, the midterm schedule that we just had, because we did, for the first time, we did, um, we had a black and gold day before midterms, which where no new content was assigned and there were no tests, just as a, a moment for the students to kind of compress, and, um, also as a great opportunity for review days in class. For myself personally, it went great, um, it's just, it was, it was awesome to have, to not worry, have to worry about another test right before you have your biggest test for the whole class. If there are any questions about students' thoughts on that or anything else, I'd be willing to field those.
Successful.
Yeah, it definitely was.
It achieved the purpose that it set out to, excellent.
Lex, have you had any feedback from the students on, just were homework during the holiday break and then going right into midterm? Did they feel that, or do you have a sense of whether they felt that was better than last year?
As far as the, the homework assigned over holiday break, or, um, for, for me personally, it, um, it was definitely manageable, just because I, um, it's, it's only applicable to honors and AP classes, I believe, that they can't even allowed to assign any sort of homework over break. And because there's, especially with this most recent break, it was one of the longest, I think one of my math teachers told me it was like the longest possible break you can have with where Christmas and, um, New Year's was placed. So it's, with that, it was definitely a manageable amount for me personally, if you space yourself out properly. But I do, I do know kids like everyone in high school who kind of wanted to enjoy their break, which meant they had a lot of work to do on the days leading up to school starting, but, um, no, definitely, definitely a manageable amount. And then, I didn't feel like teachers were waiting to assign a lot of homework over break and were, um, just assigning work to assign work. Like, I, I had a teacher in one of my AP classes who didn't feel the need to assign notes or anything over break. So they didn't, they didn't, they didn't just, just because they were given the opportunity, they didn't just use it for no purpose. But there was, in my AP US History class, there was, we had to kind of move along in the curriculum in order to be in the situation we wanted to be in for our finals. So, so we used that time to take notes on a chapter. But with the longer period of time, it wasn't, it wasn't a huge concern as far as being stressed over break and not getting to enjoy time with friends and family or vacation or anything like that.
Great.
Thank you, you for reporting, as always, welcome to stay, but I'm sure if you want to get started on the homework of the new term just started.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next item up, public comment. So we invite any members of the public who want to speak, please come to the podium, announce your name and address.
Latin has been one of the most influential classes I've taken at Barlow, and bring my diction, grammar, and knowledge of history. Our teacher, Mrs. Smith, or Magistra, as we call her, puts so much effort and energy into teaching. She has to make two lesson plans for my class while dividing time in class. On top of, she has an independent study with one of the members of her class who cannot join us in the first semester. When I interviewed at several colleges, they were so intrigued that I took Latin. One college interviewer said that it spoke volumes about my high school being relatively small on the national scale, but Latin being available. I am here because of my younger Latin classmates. These are very bright kids who just want to bring their studies to fruition. It would be detrimental to cut the program during their tenure, forcing them to another language. Students should not be discouraged for pursuing things they love to study.
Hello there, Ben Flegman, Pocahontas Road, Reading. So I'm the president of the class for 2022, and I'm here to speak on the possibility of Barlow cutting our low enrollment classes. I'd like to look at three arguments for cutting and then three arguments against them and see actually which ones prevail. So firstly, for the arguments for cutting, so first and foremost is the arguments that these programs are really expensive and that it would do better just to cut them and give citizens of Reading and Easton a little bit of a tax break. Uh, the second argument is that due to low enrollment, very few students would actually be affected by these cuts. And the third and final argument is that many of these classes, such as guitar and EMT, can found elsewhere, such as with a tutor or a private class. So their removal wouldn't actually be a great burden to students. Now, these are all cogent arguments, so let's turn to the arguments against cutting Barlow's budget. Firstly, in the case of, uh, in the case of these programs which are expensive, uh, take Latin for example. All Derg A and seventeen out of twenty Derg B schools have Latin, and therefore it seems clear that Latin would be a necessity to keep our high standing amongst our neighbors. On a similar note, AP courses are incredibly important to get into college, and if we're planning on cutting any of those, again, you'd likely see Barlow's standing with our neighboring schools decrease. Secondly, uh, these, students in these programs, even if they are few in number, such as myself, we deserve to be able to complete our course of study. When we came into Barlow in the beginning, uh, when we were signing up at the end of eighth grade, we signed up, we signed up under the assumption that we were going to be able to take four years of Latin, four years of a program that would terminate in BC Calc or AP Literate. I think that it would be ridiculous to just take away these programs. Anyways, uh, to the third point, although students may be able to find some of these classes elsewhere, again, with a guitar tutor or with a private EMT class, many classes, especially APs and languages such as Latin, are more suited to a classroom format. And others, uh, technology-based courses, I think Principles of Engineering is a good example, actually do so much better in the classroom that they basically need to be there. So I think that we should look at the, uh, the points and see, like, the question that really these comes down to. So should we focus on, for first point, uh, should we focus on the tax cut or Reading's standing? So I think that the clear choice here is that Barlow's educational standing is far more important. I don't think that anyone really comes to Easton because it's the Christmas tree capital of Connecticut. People come to Reading and Easton because of our great schools. And if we're going to try to just lower the caliber of that for the sake of a few pennies, or as the Romans would call it, a Roman assis, that would be ridiculous. Now, for the second point, uh, what's more important? That these classes have very low enrollment, or that students should be able to complete their course of studies? Again, I believe that students being able to complete their course studies is far more important, as my dad says basically every time he comes up here, "Our word is our bond." You quite frankly cannot just say, "Okay, you signed up under this assumption, you did all of that, you, you believe that, but now we're gonna take that away." I think it would be really cruel to have us have to scare down our college counselor and say, "Well, we don't have four years of a language on our resume because we weren't able to take that. We did not have, or our school just didn't offer it." And I feel like that would put us at a disadvantage compared to our neighbors. Now finally, can students find these programs elsewhere? In some cases, maybe so, but facts of the case are simple. APs, technology-based electives, and languages such as Latin are all things that we as students simply cannot get outside of Barlow. There is no other alternative to keeping these programs. So to keep Barlow strong, our students well-prepared for college, and our town in good standing educationally, keep our programs strong. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jamie Barrickman, Three Churchill Lane in Reading. So I'm here to speak about, uh, two topics. One is, um, to encourage the board and the administration to the degree to which you're able and can to help support the relaunch of the Reading Pilot. So I know Cheryl is taking on that task as well, we spoke a little bit to Tom about it. But, uh, the community in Reading, and I know the community in, uh, in Easton as well, they're, I think, much further along, are in the process of relaunching the Reading Pilot and filling the news desert that's been in the community since the newspapers stopped in the second half or in October of, uh, twenty eighteen. So it, uh, at least as far as Reading is concerned, it's going to be a nonprofit, public service, community-oriented local news publication, by the community, for the community. So we're in the process of trying to organize that effort, which as you can imagine is daunting. And the degree to which there's the opportunity for students to participate or even working into some sort of extracurricular programs or journalism initiative or, or, um, extra program at Barlow is certainly quite welcome. There's already been some students from Barlow who have volunteered to participate, and I think there's a great opportunity to combine the activities between the, the two communities. So I'm here to encourage you to the degree that you're in a position to, to help support that initiative and make, um, uh, citizen journalism a vibrant activity here at Barlow, but also in the communities of Reading and, and Easton. And then secondly, just listening to the conversation, and I've been here for a couple of previous meetings from the discussion of cutting Latin or cutting, uh, cutting back on the academic course curriculum that we're offering. And just from a general comment, it's, um, I see that as something that's quite, um, disturbing, that here we are trying to encourage academic, um, uh, you know, intellectual curiosity and, and academic thirst, and encourage more involvement of students to follow passion and to pursue, uh, things that are of interest, and then to, so we should be expanding our curriculum offerings rather than reducing them. And I know, having been on the board for a long time and being on the Board of Finance, funding is, is a key issue, which puts pressure, I think, on you to figure out solutions of how we can deliver a broader curriculum to those students that have the passion and the interest to nurture that, uh, that academic interest in an efficient way. So the use of technologies, or the use of independent studies, or the use of other ways, rather than simply classroom-based instruction, to be able to expand academic offerings rather than reduce them. Because it's, uh, it strikes me as being incompatible with the mission of trying to encourage people to, um, to pursue those interests, but then to curtail them either prematurely or curtail them at all. So anyway, I encourage you to, uh, to take that into consideration, so, thank you very much.
I'm Elizabeth Gray, fifteen, Lontown Road, Reading, Connecticut. I'm not at all a public speaker, and I would never do this unless I cared very strongly about the program. I am a Latin student, and I care very strongly about the Latin program, partly because the classroom environment itself is like, we're a close, like, a tightly knit group of peers. And, um, I've already committed five years of my life to taking Latin, and I want to continue that throughout high school. And I also can't imagine not having, um, our teacher, Mrs. Smith, or as we call her, Magistra, not teaching my class, because she brings joy to our classroom and she teaches us difficult material at an understandable pace. And she's com- I feel comfortable going to her with any questions I might have about Latin, and she can also casually integrate history into our, like, regular curriculum. Also, um, for all those schools that I would think of getting into, you need at least three to four, um, years of a language. So, and this book right here is the best thirty, three hundred and eighty-five colleges to get into, and all of the ones here are, require three years of a language, and all of these require four years of a language. And the list of, uh, forty-five or more colleges that require three to four years of a language are Amherst, Bernard, Rendles, Brown, Bryn Mar, Bucknell, Claremont McKenna, Colgate, College of William and Mary, Columbia, Dartmouth, George Washington University, Gettysburg, Herd, Heverford, Johns Hopkins, Kenyon College, Lay University, Middlebury College, Penn State, Pomona, Princeton, Stanford, Swarthmore, Rice, Trinity, Tufts, all the University of California schools, the University of Southern California, University of Pennsylvania, University of Chicago, University, University of Virginia, University of Michigan, University of Pittsburgh, University of Wisconsin-Madison, University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign, University of Colorado at Boulder, University of Southern Florida, United States Air Force Academy, Washington University in St. Louis, Wellesley, Welles, Wellesleyan, Williams and Vanderbilt. And by cutting Latin, you're taking away the Latin students' chances of getting into all of these colleges. And also, my younger sister, if she's sitting over here, and will probably also end up talking, would als- would like to take Latin in high school, and if you take, cut the Latin program, you're taking away her chances of getting into Latin as well.
Um, hi, I'm Virginia Gray, and I'm from fifteen Lontown Road, Reading, Connecticut. I'm gonna be talking about why you should not cut Latin. I'm not much of a public speaker like my sister, so this shows how much I love Latin. Even before I took Latin in middle school, I have always loved the culture and everything about it. So it's been in my past, in my present, I take it, and in my future, I want to continue taking it. And it also is in such schools, like all the ones my sister has listed, and medical and legal schools, because it's in all the terminology. Colleges also find this very interesting. It's also in your future, if you cut it, that we may not be able to get into these very good colleges, and it may lower your educational standards, and people may not want to come to Reading or Easton as much. So if you were to take away Latin, you'd be taking away my future, my past, my present, and your future, so please don't.
Hello, Jeff Flegman, Pocahontas Road, Reading. At the last board meeting, I was struck by the report of the achievement of the girls volleyball team. Uh, I played volleyball in college for four years, and so I appreciate their hard work and dedication, and that of their coach, and rightly we should celebrate. And while it may not be as great an achievement, the Latin team has enjoyed success and deserves attention. At the statewide Latin Day, Barlow's curtailment team competed. Think of its jeopardy with Roman history, culture, and language. Barlow's team came in first, defeating perennial powerhouse Glastonbury. They also competed in the declamation category and also took first prize. Like other teams, these students and their teacher deserve our recognition. Thank you, Magistra, and go Falcons. Further, with regard to our Latin program, earlier this month, I noted that all the, all of the other Derg A schools and seventeen of the twenty Derg B schools teach Latin. I explained that Barlow students are told to plan their academic careers beginning with the end in mind, and we have a moral obligation to allow students to complete their programs. Further, as you just heard, most colleges want to see at least three years of one language in high school, and more select, select colleges usually want to see four years. Indeed, we should not make it harder to apply to college, instead we should keep faith with our students. Our word is our bond. Also, as you consider cutting programs in response to declining enrollment, please understand that enrollment will rise again. The larger cohorts are coming. Today, we may have smaller AP classes in English Literature and Language Arts, Statistics, Music Theory, and US History, and smaller numbers in other subjects such as Latin and music. But that's what it means to have a school of Barlow's caliber. Cutting these programs will do real damage to our school and our students. You may think we'll bring back these opportunities when we have more students, which simply means that our current students fall into an academic donut hole. Before cutting academic programs, please look everywhere else you can. And if you are absolutely convinced that you must cut Barlow's offerings, please let our current students finish their coursework. In other words, you can realize the savings, just not immediately. And I'm sure we can explain to voters a plan to let our students complete their studies. With regard to our Latin students, I hope to provide a little more context for you to better understand the scope and direction of the work they are doing. The story of one of the greatest civilizations in the history of the world, an empire that lasted a thousand years, is written in Latin, and our students are learning to read it and understand it in the original. Indeed, the study of Latin is more than a foreign language. It is abhorrent to history, philosophy, culture, and art. More specifically, for five years, my son and his classmates have learned Latin grammar, syntax, vocabulary, and declension. The culmination of those five years is Virgil's Aeneid, you should have them before you. In college, I read it twice, once in an anthropology class and once in an English class. You each have a copy in front of you, and all of them are different. Take a look at the opening, it's marked by the, on the page there. Now, does it sound like this? Arms in the man I sing, who forced by fate and haughty Juno's unrelenting hate, expelled and exiled left the Trojan Shore. Or does it say, "My song is arms and a man, the first of Troy to come to Italy and Lavinian shores, a fated fugitive, heriot on land and sea." Or maybe it says, "I sing of warfare and a man of war. From the seacoast of Troy in early days, he came to Italy by destiny." Clearly, they're all quite different. However, after an enormous amount of preparation, my son and his classmates are ready to read the Aeneid in the language in which it was originally written. That's remarkable. They won't have to guess what Virgil wrote. With the guidance of their teacher, they will read it for themselves. We here at Barlow are proud of the acad- academ- excuse me, athletic achievements, drama and debate awards, and the scholarship of our students. And we should all be very proud that there are Barlow students reading the seminal work of Roman culture in its original Latin. We are a community, we as a community are enriched by their efforts. And to be clear, there are not alternatives for these students. Going into French or Spanish one or taking another elective would deprive them of what they have been aiming toward and striving for. This is their moment, they have worked incredibly hard to get here. Please honor their work, please keep faith with their aspirations, and please allow them to bring their studies to fruition. Thank you for your time.
Hi, uh, my name is Carol Murray. I live on Sport Hill Road in Reading. And because you haven't heard enough about Latin, we're gonna do it one more time. Um, I'm here to advocate for the continuation of the Latin program at Joel Barlow. My son is currently a junior in Latin Four Honors, and he began his Latin studies in sixth grade at John Reed. He would have liked to be here this evening, but he had an appointment with his Eagle Scout advisor, and that couldn't be changed. So he supports the classmates that spoke on their, on his behalf, and he supports, because there's no choice, what his mother's about to say. Anyway, he has always enjoyed studying this language. I really hope that he's afforded the opportunity to do so again during his final year at Barlow. Some observations on why I believe Latin is a worthwhile subject for a school to offer this year, next year, and the year after. You know, becoming multilingual, Latin never really died. And I know some people have said that in these meetings. You know, Latin evolved into French, Italian, Spanish, Portuguese, Romanian, all of the Romance languages. Ninety percent of the vocabulary of these languages comes from Latin. But to learn Latin is... But to learn Latin is therefore really to begin to study of at least six languages all at once. Vocabulary and grammar. Studying Latin aids students in mastering English. Roughly half of all English words are derived from Latin, and the students are able to greatly explain, expand their vocabulary. The regular grammar of Latin is also ideal for learning English grammar, or the grammar of many other languages. Professions. Latin prepares students for many important professions that are steeped in terms and phrases, or in English words derived from Latin. These careers include law, medicine, science, music, theology, philosophy, art, and literature. Writing and reading. The increased vocabulary and understanding of grammar gained by studying Latin enables students to write and read with greater ease and clarity. English literature. Latin grants students a deeper understanding of English literature, much of which is replete with references and citations in Latin. History. The study of Latin and its history and influence helps students to more fully understand and appreciate the Roman Empire, which has profound and continuing effects on Western civilization. Great literature and art. Latin enables students to enjoy some of the most influential literature in the world in its original language. Additionally, great works of art and monuments throughout the world are frequently graced with Latin. So, I believe that Latin is very much alive. I ask that you carefully waive decision to eliminate this course. And if you do choose to eliminate it, I hope that you take care of the students currently enrolled, and provide a sound and worthwhile instructional alternative so that they can continue their studies as Latin scholars.
Hi. Catherine Veccherelli, 4 Gray Meadow Road. Switching gears from Latin, although I fully support that, because my father chose Latin, speaks three languages, and he beats me at crossword puzzles all of the time, as I remember. Came here to talk about was the motion pieces of comments that I wanted to bring up to make sure that there was awareness or consideration for these components. So, the overall cost saving sounds positive. I think, again, it's the right direction to go. I think when we're proposing the budget, and given the past two cycles of budget that we've all attended, last year, we came through fairly unscathed as a community. We only got to vote one time, so applause to that. Two cycles ago, we attended votes three times. The sticker shock, again, while positive, I think will be something that we'll need to market to the broader community, and I want to make sure that all of us, as all boards and a community, and from a parental support component, are prepared to do that. So, last year, Tom, I would call it somewhat of roadshows to a degree. I had an opportunity to see you speak, not just in schools, but at the Mark Twain Library, where you very poignantly encouraged the community, not just the parents, to be able to vote to support the budget, and encouraged us parents to be advocates for the budget last year. So, if we're putting something with such a large sticker item out there to the budget, I want to make sure that we're prepared to be advocates for this role, and that we've done the due diligence of presenting that in the brightest light that we can. With that, I would ask that some of the considerations are that, in the corporate culture of which I work, we're required to post jobs and make sure they're public, and people are aware that they can support them and be part of that. So, that piece is there. Then, I just want to make sure, too, that we feel like we've done our due diligence, we have the brightest and the right person, who currently is supporting within our Reading community, but not all of the different segments. So, when the interview process occurred for our current individuals, are they all in the right positions, and have we looked and evaluated them throughout the entire tri board district? Because, again, if we as parents have to be the advocates to support the budget, I want to make sure that we have the right information to go out there, even after we had the conversations last year. And I felt very comfortable with being able to speak to my neighbors who don't have children, who are part of the older community. They were not easy conversations. There are still plenty of Reading residents out there who, just simply seeing an increase in a budget, regardless of the reason, when you have state mandates and healthcare costs that happen year over year, of which we don't have any control, it is still a tough conversation to have with your older community members, and to help them get there. I also am just concerned that if we put this in front of the Board of Finance, will we have their support for doing this, or are we going to end up in a position of where we are at the voting table three times? So, that's just the pieces, that as those pieces are being evaluated, will we end up with support when we take those up to the next board? Thank you.
Other public comment, and we'll move on to our next item. Oh, sorry, one more.
Mathias Galban, 635 Reading Road. Sorry, I don't have much prepared, but I just wanted to say that, other than how, as previously stated, Latin's going to increase our chances of getting into a better school, as colleges are looking for intriguing stuff like that. Also, in my English class, we just started, we just got a new textbook called Vocabulary from Latin: Classical Roots. The aim of it is to teach you roots of vocabulary words so it could appear on your SATs to help prepare us better. I, as a Latin student, flipped through it like the first chapter we're supposed to do tonight. Basically, I had a head start, basically, on the textbook of preparing us for SATs. So, basically, so by the time I'm going to be done with that, by the time it's time of SAT time, I know my Latin roots better, I know the vocabulary better, all the, every vocabulary word derived from Latin, I'm going to be more familiar with it, I'm going to be better prepared for this textbook, and ultimately, that translates to a better SAT score, and ultimately, better college, which continues on for the rest of your life, kind of. Sorry, that was unorganized, but I don't, I don't have no cards. I was prepared for this.
The other public comments. Okay, and we will move on. Board member comments. Start them this way. Do they have any comment?
No comment.
I want to thank everybody for their comments. I always like to see people come in and the public comment on what they believe in, so thank you for advocating. Just have a comment with regard to communication. As in, as a private citizen, not as a member of the board, I did attend, as Jamie Barakman said, a launch meeting for the Reading Pilot, and I understand, too, that the Eastern Courier is also launching.
Yes, it is. I went with one of those, too.
And Maureen, yeah. And so, really would encourage the board, there's really nothing for the board to do, but just wanted to be aware of it, and to the extent that, that any of us can work with the school and the students to actually write and submit pieces to both the Reading Pilot and the Eastern Courier, I think, you know, would definitely love, like to take that on and support that effort. From an individual perspective, I'm sure, I don't want to speak for Maureen, but I think, just from her nodding, she's probably going to have the same opinion. So, that will actually be.
You're accepting those pieces now, more broad enterprise pieces being accepted by the Eastern Courier now.
So, there's a way we can, we can organize it through the curriculum, or if we have any classes that have that, or even just leverage some of the content, the administrative reports, Mac's report, leverage some of that content that we already produced for other purposes, for purposes of giving it to the pilot, the courier. So, I think it's just something that we could probably fairly do, hopefully not too much extra lifting by anyone. And then, just with regard to communication, I did attend, actually, Maureen and I both did attend, a curriculum committee meeting.
By phone.
By phone. Eastern and Reading is really their formal committee, and we attended as kind of participants, but not full members. The committee discussed during the last joint board meeting. And one platform, and I don't want to, I'm not going to steal Stephanie's thunder, she'll talk about what we talked about, but I did want to advocate, or express my support for Google Meeting, which is something that we use as a platform. We still have a publicly held meeting in a physical place that's property of any of the schools, but really highly encourage board members and the committee members to use that Google Meeting platform. As long as we notice it in conjunction with the physical meeting, then we can use that and actually probably move some business faster, and give access to other people that may not be, necessarily be able to attend. So, just wanted to promote that as an option for communication. That's it.
So, I also would like to thank members of the public and our fine students for coming out and sharing your thoughts with us. I think, you know, we always welcome that. And, you know, it's a, it's a difficult job sometimes sitting up here. Sometimes it's the best job in the world when you're handing students their diplomas, but sometimes it's very challenging. And we have had a lot of discussions, we've put it on multiple meeting agendas to, you know, kind of encourage everyone to understand our decision-making process relating to these classes that have lower enrollments. I, my first year on the board, I stake the claim to fight for Latin when it was on the chopping block, and both of my children have benefited from Latin. And I also took Latin, and I would say, eliminating Latin at this time is probably not factum plerimum, but we will see. But I would encourage those who support Latin to also support your younger siblings and the future, in that, you know, our education system has to be a continuum. And so, obviously, it's difficult to run a class with a teacher with four students or six students. And so, if, if the program is going to be able to, you know, be sustained, we need to encourage higher enrollment and more students coming in. So, I just would encourage everyone to think about that, as, you know, we struggle to make these very challenging decisions. But, again, thank you for coming out, and I encourage you to, you know, keep coming and let us know what you're thinking. So, thank you.
Great. Me, too, would like to thank everyone for coming out and showing enthusiasm for the Latin program. Also, one thing I was going to add into our agenda, but we've got a pretty packed agenda at this point, so I think I'll hold it until the next time unless anyone else feels strongly about it. But the other boards, Eastern, Reading, have also started looking at social media, and being, using that as another communication vehicle. So, we've had some discussions, Cheryl and I, with those boards and what they're doing. So, I think I'll hold that for our next February meeting, maybe put it on as a discussion topic where we can thoroughly talk through, you know, what platforms and how we would administer and so forth, those programs. So, I think it's something that's, it's worth looking, the Region Nine Board do as well. That's a comment.
I'm going to defer until the end of the meeting, too. Me, as well.
All right. Our next item is recess to an executive session to use a candidate for a special education director. So, I do ask the public bear with us, because we will move into the board, we'll move into this from over here to the side. While we have the executive session, we will try to keep it brief, so it can come back, because we have a full agenda and lots of items on that I'm sure the public's interested in hearing. So, with that, I'm going to see if we can get a motion to go into executive session. Invite Mrs. Jennifer Del Conti and Dr. Tom McMoore into the session. A move.
Second.
All right. Passes. And we will move to executive session, so we all bear with us, and you'll return shortly.
Did you put it on your phone?
Did you put it on your phone?
Come out of the executive session at nine twenty-one. At this point, we won't have any further actions on the interview with Special Education Director discussion. So move on into our next item. And we'll try to move quickly. I know the hour is getting later and we still have a jam-packed agenda, which we will make adjustments to depending on the hour as we get through other items. So we'll try to move through things fairly quickly here to get into the discussion of possible action item. So on administrative reports, and Tom stepped down, so.
As submitted, we're going to, what does Mike say, cede our time? Graciously, graciously.
So everybody should have copies of the administrative reports. We did have a couple items. We did have a couple items on finance.
Yeah, so there are two things I would like the board's support for, and it's on the transfers page that I've distributed to the board members. All of my normal monthly materials are in the package and happy to take any questions that you may have on those as well. The transfers that are in front of you relate to two different topics. The first one is related to an increase, sorry, the migration of our HR payroll financial system, which we've discussed throughout the year. So this is the first wave of financials associated with that project that's being distributed equally among all three districts. The amount for the Region Nine Board is fourteen thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars per cent. And this is to fund the software as well as the implementation migration activities from Power School Corporation for the e-finance plus implementation. And the request would be to move those funds from Certified Salary Line, which is account number eleven hundred dash one eleven, to move them to the Central Office account, which is the twenty-three twenty-nine nine nine account.
So we need our motion to approve the transfer because of the dollar amount in our policy? So do we have a motion?
We'll move the transfer fourteen thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars and four cents from gentleman's reduction certified salary to Central Administration.
Second.
Second, Gwen, alright. Any further discussion on the transfer?
Just so we know, that was, original motion was not to cede something thirty-five or something, so. Scott did pretty well on that one.
Still within that very nicely done.
I mean, there may still be some incremental costs, but this is far and away the bulk of it, for sure.
Is all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Alright, the second transfer relates to a change in special education. We've had changes in student services, which is, requires increased transportation costs. It also does offset, however, some reduction in the tuition line due to those change in services. So as a result, we'd like to transfer seventy thousand twenty-five dollars and nineteen cents from the twelve four dash five sixty-three account, which is the tuition account, to the Special Ed Transportation Line, which is account number twelve hundred dash five ten.
Motion on this item as well for the transfer of the dollar amount?
So I'll move that we transfer seventy thousand twenty-five dollars and nineteen cents from Special Ed Tuition Private School to Special Education Transportation.
Second.
Thank you. A quick question clarification, so then essentially we won't need the tuition for, okay.
We don't expect to, given what we know at this point.
Okay, thank you.
You may have answered it, but that's, because when you articulated it, you said we weren't going to need all of the tuition, we're going to need more of the transportation. Is this seventy thousand is, that's additional and there's also tuition, or is that in lieu of?
It is reduced tuition.
Okay, so it's reduced, but the seventy thousand is required transportation?
That's the increase on the transportation side of it, yeah.
Any other questions, discussion? Alright, so all in favor of the motion for the transfer?
Aye.
I believe that was it on the administrative report items. I think it's got all the healthcare, everything else is filed in the report. Alright, so then we'll move on to reports, item B, Board of Education Committee Reports.
So I don't think we've had any committees yet.
So we can move through that one, thank you. Alright.
Policy has continued to be, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Not to delay with the agenda, but with dedication, just about every Friday, and we'll have a very major materials to present to the board, but I think we have a few more weeks to go if we do.
Thank you.
Going to be exciting stuff.
Yeah. You're forward to it. Then we'll move on to item. Item nine A, discussion and possible action, end of year financial report.
Yeah, I can take that. So I'd like to introduce to you Lauren Davis, who's approaching the podium. Lauren is the Senior Director at RSM, our audit firm. You may be familiar with Scott Bassett, our partner, who's come to these sessions previously. Scott wasn't able to join us tonight, so Lauren is here to present our end of year financial report.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. For the record, I'm Lauren Davis, Senior Director for RSM. I served as the manager on the audit engagement this year. As Scott mentioned, Scott Bassett, the partner on the engagement couldn't be here today, so I'm filling in his place. Scott has met already with the Audit Committee and presented. They require communications and deliverables to them, so he's already done that. We've conducted our audit in accordance with government auditing standards. We will be issuing unmodified opinions on the financial statements and the state's single audit. We will also be issuing our report on internal control over financial reporting and tests of compliance. We did not note any material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, or non-compliance. There were no surprises or anything of any significance really noted in our audit. It went very smooth. There was no debt issued. There was no major capital projects in progress, and everything was pretty consistent. We have completed all of our audit work and put on issuing our opinions and deliverables this week. I just want to thank Scott and his team for all their assistance and cooperation during the process. They made it very easy for us, and thank you for being, to have this continued opportunity to serve the region.
Is there any further questions? I think we can have questions before the motion.
Yeah, I think so.
If anybody's got questions on the report.
So we're a little later this year than is typical. Maybe you could speak to that. Was that our end, your end?
That was the ice storm in December.
Okay.
It was on the agenda for the December Board Meeting, and since that meeting was delayed due to the ice storm, about an extension with the State Department.
Okay, so that's great. And then maybe just because we have many new members. I know when I first came on the board, you hear audit and you're thinking one thing, but it's really something a little different. So is there some way you can kind of give a very brief overview of what the process is? In other words, you don't look at every single thing, you do more of a random sampling and more of a balance sheet? So if you could just give a general kind of overview, so it might be helpful to new board members to kind of understand the process?
Right, so it's the responsibility of management to really prepare and present financial statements that are in accordance with US GAAP. And then really, our responsibility is to express an opinion that, based on our audit, that we can provide reasonable assurance that those financial statements are free from a material misstatement. So to your point, we don't look at every little transaction, we do do it a sampling basis. And we are able to provide that opinion based on our sample and our audit work that we do. So we do design tests, we do take a risk-based approach. We look at the risk, we focus on the riskier areas. We have set, we set a materiality to our audit as well. So we do look at internal controls, we provide any feedback on things that we might see that might be deficiencies in internal control. But to your point, we're not looking at every little transaction, yeah.
Good, and I think we've made great strides in that area thanks to Mr. Rice. I think we are much more confident and transparent, so I think it's great.
You do a very good job.
Questions? I do know coming out of Audit Committee, we did approve, to send it to the board for recommendation for approval. File it, so we need full board approval for that. So the Audit Committee did review through it. Cheryl was the other member of the past Audit Committee.
We did go through a couple meetings, and as Scott said, it was just delayed for board approval because of the weather, we had to cancel that meeting where we normally would have approved it. Just from an accounting perspective, that's my profession, so I will say I did read these financials. I just have one question, Scott. I think the Pension Committee did look at the assumptions, right, in conjunction with the Pension Committee work, in terms of assumptions that made the liabilities that are, in terms of what factors are the liabilities, and I do know the Pension Committee does look at that, right?
Pension Committee does evaluate the, along with the actuary who advises the Pension Committee, the assumptions in regards to salary growth, growth of the investments, those types of things, to assure that those assumptions are not too aggressive, not too conservative. And they periodically review those and they periodically adjust those.
No comments, the process is good, and in fact, the team, I just want to commend the audit team and the management team for the job they did on the audit, went relatively smoothly. I know we had some new team members in the Central Office, and the teams collectively were able to manage through that as well. So thank you for your efforts.
I'd like to make a motion that the Region Nine Board accept the financial report for the two thousand eighteen nineteen fiscal year, based on the recommendation of the Audit Committee, and thank the fine administrators for their hard work.
Alright. Second?
I'll second it again.
Question? Alright, then all in favor of approving it?
Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren.
Thank you.
Thank you, Audit Committee. Moving on, Campus Improvement Project update. As the Chair of the Campus Improvement Project Committee, I think we're going to probably table this, I don't know, Scott, if there's anything.
I was only just going to note that there's nothing real material to report at this point. We do have a few closeout items underway, so I think there'd be a more material update at the follow-up Board Meeting.
Okay, alright, so more to come on that at the next meeting. Alright, Approval of Committee List and Meeting Schedule. So I, this one, we, I can locate them here in my papers. We have several schedules that are ready to approve. And then we have a tentative list or proposal list of board member on the committees. And again, as Board Chair, I can appoint people to committees and move them around, so we will add a few other names. We have Juliette's addition on here. We did add on from the one that's the current committee, joint board meeting a week ago. We did add an ER nine joint policy committee, and our current policy committee on Region Nine will be on that same committee. I know they're looking to meet our chief audit meeting, so I don't think there are any issues there. Yes, so we'll be adding that committee onto our list and then adding a few other names onto the committee. So I don't think there's anything that we need to approve as a board on here. We'll get it posted with the current.
Correct, if I may be so bold, yes, you're correct, does not need board approval. However, I do think statute requires that you announce members of the committee at a public meeting. So I would advise that maybe you read off the names of who's on each committee, and that's just procedural, very quickly. And then when you put somebody else on, again, you just should at the next meeting just say added so-and-so.
So I will do that for the record, and we'll move through them fairly quickly. I'll only read the board members as opposed to all the other members. So on Audit Committee, we have Mike and Cheryl on Budget, Cheryl and Maureen. On Building Committee, Gwen, Todd, and Suzanne from Public. Curriculum, Karen, Mary Lee, Cheryl, and Maureen. Facilities and Fields, Mary Lee, Gwen, Todd, and Mike, and Juliette. Negotiations, Cheryl, Mike, Maureen. We have two members of the committee, one from Reading, one from Easton. Jim Sanders from Reading, Ira Kaplan from Easton, who've confirmed their participation, and Juliette from the Board. On Policy, Gwen and Maureen. On Superintendent Evaluation, Cheryl and Juliette. On Technology, Gwen and Todd. On Transportation, Karen, Gwen, and Mike. On the newly formed ER nine joint policy, we have Gwen and Maureen. On ER nine joint long-range planning, Mary Lee and Cheryl. On ER nine joint wellness, we have a vacancy there. On ER nine joint food service, Karen. On ER nine joint transportation, Gwen. On ER nine joint calendar, Mike. ER nine joint health insurance, Cheryl and Maureen. And ER nine Central Office Ad-Hoc Committee, Todd. I think those are all of them, yes.
So being on the Pension Committee, I know that historically there's been one member from Easton, one from Reading.
So we have one member from Easton at the moment, and two, two public people, so we need to add someone from Reading from the Board. And we have two town people from each of the towns.
The particular reason I ask is, and I know we're going to get onto the schedules for that committee. That Pension Committee traditionally meets the last Monday of the month following the quarter end. So that would be the last Monday in January, the last Monday in April, et cetera. We've, of course, deferred that pending this appointment. We have members from our USI advisors who attend those meetings and present their material to it. So I've been in contact with them, letting them know that we were getting members appointed soon and getting the schedule appointed soon, so we can get that, that meeting done. So as soon as we know that final member.
Okay, yeah, so we'll need to add a board member from Reading onto Pension. They can convene their first meeting of pension matters. Alright, so if anyone has any other changes, updates, please go back to me and we'll make adjustments and then we'll post this list onto the website. So the next part of it is the schedules. We have, I think, three, four, and four on my papers, four, four, three, what's my missing one?
So given the lateness of the hour, and given that these give the, these actually just provide regular meetings for these committees, and special meetings can be added, these just give you the ability to add agenda items on the regularly scheduled ones. I don't know whether there are members on certain committees that have looked at these and have issues, but I will just be so bold as to make a motion that we approve the committee meeting schedule for the Pension Committee, the Facilities and Fields Committee, the Curriculum Committee, and the Audit Committee as presented.
Excellent, good. Thank you.
One potential proposed change, the curriculum and budget, because there's no set meeting for the budget, but I do believe that it is the intent, since Maureen and I are both, is to try to have the current meetings of both.
Great.
So that would just be, I would just propose one change to the twenty twenty Curriculum Committee meeting schedule to say, to include that it's also a joint meeting of the Budget Committee.
Good.
Alright, and so both committees will convene meetings at the same time? Is that your information?
Yep.
Is that okay in your motion?
That's, that's fine, just so that I understand. So all the Curriculum Committee meetings are also Budget Committee meetings, or was there a certain one, or?
No, the intent was just really from an administrative standpoint, since the two are intertwined, and really the Central Office staff team, you know, Stephanie, Tom, Scott, Gina, you know, it's the same group. And from a, from a Board Committee standpoint, Maureen and I are common members on both. So from purely from an administrative standpoint, and we tend to talk about both, and last year we ran them concurrently. So, you know, we could use the same hour and modify this to say it's a joint meeting, and I could, we could just call them to order at the same time. Last year we had it, one was at nine, one was at ten, then we had audit, this is just really more for.
So you want to change it to a twenty twenty Curriculum slash Budget Committee meeting schedule?
Correct.
Yeah, they'll follow the same schedule.
Only thing is that there may be times when there's a joint meeting of the Easton, Reading, and Region Nine Curriculum Committees. If you combine them, you still want the option of being able to hold that meeting.
But there's, no, there's only four meetings, they're proposing for these four meetings to be.
For those four.
Yes, but you'll still have two separate committees.
Yes, we'll still have two committees, but they convene at the same.
Exactly.
Okay.
Alright, so as amended then in the motion, alright, that it's curriculum and budget following the same schedule. Alright, any other discussion? Motion then to approve the. any other discussion? Motion then to approve the four, it's five now, with Budget Committee meeting schedules. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so it passes. All right. We are now to item 9D, and I'm just doing the time check, so, you know, are you...
Forty-two.
Are you okay with starting this item?
Good item.
Or otherwise, we can table.
I'm looking, making sure they're awake, they're ready to go, they're set for this.
Ready. All right, well, we'll start with this item, see where we get to for the next one. So, I'll turn it over to you, Gina.
Okay. So, I am going to just turn on our Apple TV, if it goes up. And I will introduce Patty Eschell and Dave D'Angelo. Can I get some help? Please go to the left. What we would like to present to you tonight is our proposal for the 2020-2021 Special Education Budget. There are copies for the public, and this will be put online following this meeting. You want me to click, or would you like to?
Yeah, if you don't mind clicking, Gina, or do you wanna click, Dave? Wanna be a clicker?
I don't...
I know I don't want to. I know I don't wanna click.
I think you could try it from there, and if not...
I don't wanna be on the button. I don't wanna click.
You don't wanna click?
I don't wanna click.
I'll be the clicker.
I'll click for you when you...
All right.
My goodness, my computer is wireless, so.
All right. Thank you for the time again to be able to present the special ed portion of the budget ahead of the full budget. Just to, I know special education can often have an impact on the overall budget, so I think it's been nice for the opportunity to be able to present this to the board in advance, so that when you look at the full budget, you've already got kind of the picture of where special education is coming from.
You're right, Gina.
Why don't you click, Gina? Hit the arrows on the laptop.
Yep.
I didn't wanna click.
I'm gonna leave my computer right here for you.
Sorry. Thank you.
I wanted to start with just talking about the Andrew F decision, because actually, it probably helped clarify and make a very straightforward definition of what we're talking about with special education nowadays. It's probably the most, one of the most significant special education decisions that's come out in the last 35 years. So, basically, what Andrew F was saying was that students need to be able to be making meaningful, have meaningful benefit out of their special education services. The previous standard was really, it talked about appropriate education, it talked about educational benefit, it really focused on, like, some benefit. The Supreme Court ruled that that really wasn't the intent of IDEA. IDEA was for students to make meaningful benefit, in light of their individual circumstances. So, it really did raise the standard. There was a lot of concern after Andrew F that it would result in potentially increased litigation because of that higher standard. And fortunately, not just in Connecticut, but across the nation, it really hasn't. I think special education programs have always strove to provide both things that are required by the law, compliance and quality. At Joe Barlow, we've worked hard to make sure that we meet all of our compliance standards, that we're in line with all federal and state requirements. And we're always looking to make sure that we're providing that meaningful and maximum benefit for the students. Our job to do that, then, is to provide that meaningful benefit while we're looking at costs. We want to provide it in district, we want to provide high quality, we want a bend curve, so special education continues to provide that benefit, but provides it in a really financially appropriate way. So, our goal always continues to be independence for students. The Individual Education Plan or the IEP is, continues to be the linchpin for special education services. It is the legal document that outlines exactly what we are proposing to provide for a student. It drives the services. It's an agreement between the district and that student and their family. When we are looking to provide that educational benefit, we always want to try to provide it in the most cost-effective way. We want to build capacity, we want to help students build their independence. We don't want special education to be a place that, once you're signed there, you stay there forever. We want you to get the services you need, generalize those skills, and move on and practice them. The least restrictive environment, one of the things that was in the original special education law back when it came out in 1975, continues to be an important part. And we look at, when we talk about budgets, considering that least restrictive environment, I think really is important. We only want to move up to those more restrictive settings when student need requires it. We always want to move down to less and less restrictive environments as students progress, as the need requires it. Providing your consultative services, your co-taught services, that's going to continue to be your least restrictive environment, provide maximum quality for students in cost-effective ways. Your most expenses, of course, are your out-of-district placements, your homebound services or hospitalization services. Joe Barlow provides that full continuum of services from consultative services with general ed, all the way up through our outplacements. Each one of those has an impact on our overall budget and what we're trying to provide for the students. We look at what the students need, we're not looking to give them a boost. We don't plug students into a program. Because we have this program, you need to fit into it. We're gonna provide what you need. Wanted to give you an idea of what we're looking at for our child counts. So, our projection for the 2021 school year is, we're just up slightly. We project we'll be up by three students. I know in looking at other presentations that we're trying to take that longer look, that three-year look out. So, we did project out through the 22-23 school year. As I always like to say to you, my projections past a year out are always in pencil, even a year out, they're in pencil. Because students come in, students exit. But these are our best estimates. The reason why I think we're seeing that real high pop-up in the 21-22 school year is, that will be the year that we exit our smallest class. Our senior class that year is only about 20-22 students, and we're going to be gaining one of our biggest classes that's currently in the middle school, which right now is about 33-34 students. So, that's why we have that significant jump-up in 21-22. And as the general population, which we know continues to decrease, that's why that special ed percentage, even though we've stayed fairly steady, we've had that bump-up in the increase of our special ed numbers. So, that's why 22-23, 17.5 percent, it doesn't look like a fantastic number. It's a function of the declining general ed population, but a very stable special ed population over time. The 1,200 line is our special education budget, so we'll take a look at that one first. This current school year, we were fortunate to have some nice reductions in the 1,200 line, and we were able to see a decrease of a little over half a million dollars from last year to the current school year. We are doing well with that budget, and we are within parameters, and please give me wood, because it is going into February, but we're doing, we're doing fine. As we, thank you. For the 2021 school year, we're anticipating, again, a slight decrease of about $47,000. And when I say that slight decrease, we, again, are keeping that eye on what the students need, what's the benefit that we're trying to provide the students, how can we do that in a cost-effective manner, how can we do that while we're building capacity here to keep those costs down, keep bending that curve down in the direction that we want it to go. So, we're happy about that. We're down a little bit going into next year. We're down, even though we are making some budget requests in the 1,200 line. We will be asking, we are asking, to add a certified full-time teacher for our bridge services. We are asking to add a .5 Orton Gillingham certified teacher, and we would like to reassign one teacher from our 3E program into our transition coordinator program. We have an opportunity in that transition services. We do have a retirement. So, our transition coordinator that we currently employ will be, has announced her retirement for the end of the school year. When we talk about building capacity, we think one way to do that would be take advantage of that retirement and move one of our teachers over into that program. When we look at the Orton Gillingham, again, we're looking to share costs with our Easton and Reading districts. That's why it is .5 position that we're asking for. That person would also be working in both Easton and Reading. And we'll talk a lot about bridge tonight, and why we think that is a significant investment for, an investment for significant savings. That continuum, that triangle that we looked at before, we do provide an array of services here, Barlow. The more we're able to provide them in district, we feel the better we can manage the costs of those programs. Our least restrictive environment, again, providing the services in the general ed classes, such as in our co-taught classes. We do need to plan for those out-of-district placements, our most restrictive settings. We only move students down that list as we need to. We do have planned funding in there for our homebound services, and we always look at, that's one of those areas that's very hard to predict, but we look at our historical spending, and that's how we use, that's how we've been kind of judging where we want to see our homebound services go. So, as we look at that continuum, we feel the more we can provide at Joe Barlow, the more we can help control those costs. That 123 students that we anticipate with IEP services for next year, that's kind of the breakdown of it. We're anticipating 107 students in, at Joe Barlow, 16 students in out-of-district placements. 91 of those students will be receiving an array of special ed services. We have six students that would benefit from the bridge program, and we will continue with, we have 10 students in our 3E program this year. We'll have 10 students again next year. How do we provide services for those students, Dave?
This is me. So, case management is, the case manager is really responsible for making sure that the IEP services are delivered. They know the IEP like the back of their hand, and they're familiar with the student, they're familiar with the team of professionals working with the student, with the parents. The case manager has ongoing communication with staff and families. They do quarterly and annual reports. They're responsible for evaluations and meetings. They're responsible for direct instruction, progress monitoring, daily, ongoing consultation, ongoing collaboration with all the teachers. In a minute, I'll get a little bit deeper into what that actually looks like. And they are the constant feedback loop between the DC and the director to keep us informed, and to make sure that we're fulfilling the IEP and doing right by the student at all times. The responsibilities of the case manager. So, our case managers, they teach five periods a day. In addition to that, they liaison with all the general ed teachers that may be working with a student. An example, we have a ninth-grade case manager who may interact with three different math teachers, four different history teachers, three wellness teachers, four English teachers, two science teachers, and elective teachers as well. It's a big job. It's a lot of communication, it's a lot of building relationships with everyone in the building. It's a big job. They participate in quite a few PPTs. We estimate between 25 and 35 PPTs annually for each one of our case managers. They do all the paperwork to prepare for it. They make sure all the boxes are checked. If they don't, they hear about from Patty and I, and that's their job. They progress monitor their students quarterly. Every time report cards go out, our case managers have to code IEPs, make sure that we're accounting for the progress that needs to be made. Some of those IEPs can be quite lofty. An example would be, one of our ninth-grade IEPs has eight goals with, on it, 20 objectives. Each one of those objectives needs to be coded for, at the end of the quarter. 12th-grade IEP that we sampled, six goals with 14 objectives. So, even though we're moving towards independence for a 12th-grader, we still have plenty of, plenty of objectives to keep track of. Case managers also develop, develop a good amount of the IEP. They write goals and objectives. They fill in what's called a PLOP page, a Present Level of Performance page. They collect teacher reports. They summarize the teacher reports in the present levels of performance. It's a big job. They also conduct evaluations. Patty and I assign, when a student needs some achievement testing, Patty and I assign that and conduct those evaluations and write reports. So, it's a big responsibility. Case management numbers over the years.
I don't wanna save all of them for the end, but I don't wanna interrupt too much.
Sure.
But can you just explain a little more, like, the case managers, how many do we have? Is that like a special ed teacher? Is there additional stipend? Is it different qualifications? I just, because I'm unfamiliar with the case manager, I'd like to understand better what exactly it...
So, the next slide might help a little bit.
Oh, okay, never mind.
It might help a little bit. So, 17-18, my first year here, you can see that the FTEs across the top are our special education teachers.
Those are our special education teachers, Maureen.
Those are our special education teachers. And back in 17-18, our special education teachers were carrying about 14 students on their caseload. Myself is the DC, I had 10. We have the teacher visually impaired carry two. The three teachers carry 12 between the two of them, and then related service staff, that might be social worker, speech-language pathologist, school psychologist, carry two. As you can see, as the years have gone on, our teachers are being asked to case manage more students.
If I could just interrupt, just to make sure that Mike's point was answered.
Sure.
This is a responsibility of a special education teacher. It's not an extra stipend. If you recall on the last slide, the FTEs you see presented there are teaching five classes. It's a regular load, and this is part of their responsibility as a special educator.
Right.
It's a very typical model, Mike, in just about any district, our feeding districts.
Right. No, it's great. Thank you.
So, this flow chart does show how case management has changed over the last few years. So, just to answer your question a little bit more, Mike, that last column, the related service, like I said, that's speech-language pathologist, school psychologist. We don't want to overburden those people. They have plenty of other things to be doing with their time. But over the last few years, we have asked them to case manage some of our students, just to keep some of the bulk off of, off of our classroom teachers. You know, we talk about, and I've spoken to Gina, and I talk to Patty all the time, we talk about that tipping point for case management. Really, once you break 17, and you're in 18 and higher numbers, it's a lot of work. And I don't like to ask my teachers to case manage more than 18 students. It's, you get to that position where you don't want mistakes to be made. And once you hit that level, it becomes very burdensome. So, looking forward to next year, the 2021 projection, we'd like to see our special ed teachers carry about 17 students for case management. We'd like our new bridge teacher to be able to pick up any students that are participating in bridge services. So, that's about six students. And I'd like to decrease my case management down to about six students. And by doing that, we can relieve the related service people from case management.
Dave, can you explain why the TVI, the Teacher Visually Impaired FTE, jumps from seven students to 17?
Absolutely. So, the teacher... So, so the Teacher for Visually Impaired, a few years back, only case managed a few students. As, as a student that's visually impaired needed a little bit less of his attention, he was able to work with some other students. Our Teacher for Visually Impaired actually has picked up some, some classroom duties, teaching things like the math skills class, teaching integrated support. And it's been a nice way for, for that teacher to work with more students. And he's been able to pick up, he's been able to pick up more students.
Taking advantage of those dual certifications as well. So that person is, is both certified as a teacher of the vision impaired and a special education certification as well. So they're highly qualified to do either or.
Sorry, before you move from there, related services? Since we're moving.
Speech, language, school psychologist.
School psychologists.
They're carrying a case.
Social worker.
We're going to shift away from that.
Yes. Yeah, we've asked some of our related service staff to carry one to two students. Again, like I said, they have, they have a big job to do and, and rather than have to ask them to do that.
The special ed teachers also, when, when a related service person is case managing, say you, you have a speech language, they're going to be obviously very familiar in actually providing the, the speech and language services, but they're going to need to go back and intersect with that special ed teacher for any of the academic goals, the transition coordinator for the transition goals. So they're experts in their area and they certainly, they communicate with Dave and myself all the time, but it, it is more difficult for them to manage the, all of the goals and objectives in an IEP because there are often some that are out of their, their purview and they need to liaison with those other people a lot.
Right.
Is it, is it fair to say, Patty and Dave, that some of those related service providers are also providing service to the general education population, not strictly for the special education?
Correct.
All of them.
All of them are.
Does that then free up their time to focus solely on general ed classes and how does that change? I mean, maybe this is a question for the next part of the presentation, the second presentation, but just curious as.
Well, those related service staff, they work with both special education students and general education students. But freeing up the case management absolutely helps them with their time, absolutely. The, the FTEs, the, the special education teachers, the other piece that's important to realize about that is, is we do our best to have any student that's participating in integrated support. So integrated support is one period a day, kind of like the resource model where, where those students get some of their direct instruction. Those teachers are typically the same teachers that are going to case manage students. And so they see the student every, every single day. A related service person won't see, won't see the student every single day. They might see them once a cycle, maybe twice a cycle, but the integrated support teachers will, will see them every day. So it's important to, to keep that, that close contact. Okay, so projected levels of, of service. Patty and I put to get this slide together just to show you how, how much service our, our students are getting. The column all the way over to the left is students that are receiving less than four hours of, of special education during the week. The vast majority of our students are receiving less than, than four hours. 53% of our, of our students are receiving less than four hours. The second column is those students that are receiving four to, four to nine and a half hours a week. And those students might be, might have both integrated support and also a co-taught math class, where they might have integrated support and also a small group English or math or history class. So they're being seen about twice a day by, by a special education teacher. That's about 27% of our students fall into that category. And the 10 to 15, .9, about 12% of our students fall, fall there. That's those students that have maybe an integrated support class, also a small group English class, maybe also a, a small group math class. But a small percentage of our students need that, that much intervention. And then the, the last column is mostly our 3E students, those students that, that need greater than 15.9 hours a week, mostly our 3E students. The reason we share this with you is because we want you to understand that, that we're not giving more than, than needs to be given. We very highly value independence. And at this level, by the time our students hit high school, we're hoping that we're just going to be touching base with them a little bit, providing some, some specialized instruction, but not more than they, than they need. We really need to be pushing independence at this level. A chance to speak a little bit about co-taught math. Those of you that were here last year, when Patty and I did our, our, our budget presentation, know that I can talk about co-taught math for, for quite a while. Tom sat, sat through a few of my presentations on co-taught math. It's definitely something that I'm passionate about. I just wanted to bring, bring some, some numbers to you. The, the real important thing about co-taught math at this point is, is providing access and equity for our students with IEPs. Back in 2017, 18, both Patty and I and Gina, we really had this kind of aha moment that our students were not, we're not getting to classes like algebra and geometry and algebra two. You see in the left-hand, left-hand column, very few of our students, only 32 of our students with IEPs were making it to those, to those classes. And we decided back then that there's, that we needed to do something about it. We needed to, to do something to provide access and equity. Another data point that we looked at was our PSAT and SAT scores. Our students with IEPs were not stacking up well against those without IEPs. And so we really took a, a long look at that and decided that we needed to make a change. What we decided to do last year was, was to start co-taught Algebra I. Myself and Jim DeVoto, a great, great math teacher here, we, we co-taught Algebra I together last year. We set, we had 16 students with IEPs participate in our co-taught Algebra I classes. But it wasn't just the 16 students with IEPs. We had also students with 504 plans and 46 students total that we were able to, to work with through, through co-taught Algebra I. So we really got to see our students, our, our numbers jump up for those students that were, that were able to access Algebra I. This year, we started with co-taught geometry as well. We still have Algebra I in place, but we're also doing co-taught geometry. So, so now we have 18 students that, with IEPs that are participating in geometry. We still have those low numbers in Algebra II. We just don't have the track record. If you, if you kind of look on the diagonal, we had eight students with IEPs starting off in, in Algebra I, and that became seven students that moved on to geometry and only five that moved on to Algebra II. So we still don't have the numbers in Algebra II, but we are, we're building, we're building towards that. We have more students that are, that are able to access Algebra and geometry. Next year, we hope to offer Algebra II. That will help us to, to move our students through Algebra I, Algebra II, and Algebra III so that, I'm sorry, Algebra, Geometry and Algebra II, so that we're, we're able to, to move them through the whole track.
It's also a, in many ways, co-teaching is, is really your tiered intervention model. You're providing a tier one intervention because every student in that, in that classroom is going to benefit from the expertise of your content instructor and your special ed instructor who can help with some of the, the study skills, the study habits, the engagement, et cetera. And then when they see students struggling, they're able to provide those tier two kinds of interventions, flexible grouping, looking different ways of matching up the students, different types of assessments, things like that, that allow students to get the support they need in the regular classroom without a referral later on down the road for more costly services through special education. So I really do look at the co-teaching as well as a, as a good, strong tiered intervention model.
Yeah, and, and there's no doubt that I.
This is going to sound rude, so I apologize in advance. We can't spend four minutes on every slide. You gotta, you gotta move it along.
Okay.
Got it.
I apologize for that.
You don't have to.
Nope, no problem. So Bridge, Bridge Services. So Bridge, we piloted the last two years. It's a supportive service to help students feel connected, safe and valued by keeping them close to, to teachers and their peers, really keeping them here rather than looking towards an outplacement. In the pilot this, this year, we supplied a .4 certified teacher, myself, and also a BT. Next year, we're looking to, to, to fund it with a full-time certified teacher and the continuation of a, of a BT.
So just on that point, would it be fair to say that the savings from corresponding reduction in outplacements is greater than the cost of that teacher for that program?
It'd be very fair to say.
You'll actually see the details on slide 25.
Okay.
Absolutely. Just some of the highlights from Bridge Services last year, 1819. We had some really good attendance. We've had some really good credits earned. Some of those students on top were the full-year participants. Some of the students on the bottom were, were partial year participants. We started off with five students, we ended the year with nine.
And I think that's important to note, that we, we thought we were going to start smaller and it grew.
Yep, yep, started with five, ended with nine. This year, we started, we started with five once again. We have grown now to nine. We, we've had some great highlights in the first semester, credits earned, some really good attendance. We had some, some firsts for us with Bridge Services. We actually exited a student from Bridge Services in January, moved him back to more of an integrated support, general, special education model. He's, he's our first graduate. We feel good about that. We have another projected student to be exiting at the, in June. We actually first, got our first college acceptance letter as well, which, which felt great all around. Again, we started the year with five and right now we're at nine students. So this, this graphic shows you, the, the line in blue is our outplacements. Those are our total outplacements between the 561 and 563 lines. That's the, the change in, in that line from 2013, 14 to our proposal next year. The red line on top is our total 1,200 line. As you can clearly see, as our outplacements go, our total budget goes. When we can contain costs for our outplacements, we can make a real impact on the overall special education budget. The breakdown, Mike, you were asking about the, about the costs, kind of the cost analysis. For a typical student at Barlow, the average per pupil cost is $23,703. That's for next year. Our cost for Bridge next year for one of our Bridge students is $43,447. That's based on the seven students we plan on starting with, I'm sorry, six students we plan on starting with next year. We got that by taking the cost of the full-time certified teacher and the BT, splitting that by six, adding it on to the pure pupil cost, and we come up with the $43,477. The average cost to, to outplace a student, a typical outplacement is, is around 68 to 69,000. Add on to that transportation, 20, 20 to $45,000, you're looking in somewhere in the $90,000 to $200,000 ballpark. All those numbers are important to our bottom line. They're really important to our budget, but they're even more important to those students that we're actually keeping, keeping here at Barlow. Because typically when a student is outplaced, they typically don't come back. So we like keeping our students here, close to their peers, close to their families and close to their teachers.
Is that range, the actual range for those six students or is that just an average based on similar cases?
Average to similar.
Is it fair to say that's in within range of, you know, but I know we can't get into individuals, but is that fair to say that they're in that, they would have been in that range if we did outplace them, those, the six people?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Actually, the, the regional efficiencies group that I've been working with, about 12 districts, we looked at 233 outplacements last year and the average of that was $85,000 for tuition and about the same for, for transportation. So actually 68, 69 is, is a good number for us to be finding as an average for our outplacements.
For the, the reading for the Orton Gillingham certified instructor that we're asking for, looking at the IEPs projecting services next year, we do see a number of students who have reading support in their IEPs. Connecticut went beyond the federal legislation a few years ago when they identified LD dyslexia as a subcategory of learning disabilities. That's above and beyond federal definitions. And, and that's fine. We've always identified students with reading issues, but when we, and I think it was through the, the, the work of some really strong and vibrant parent groups that pushed for that subcategory classification, and it has resulted probably in more litigation. Parents want their students to be able to read. I don't blame them. They come into PPTs asking for very specific reading programs. There's a lot more literature, support, research on good reading instruction nowadays. We know kids with dyslexia, it is, it's, it's, it's more neurobiological, they, it's, they are not hardwired to read the same way other students can. They need a very specific approach. We're looking to share that position with Eastern and Reading to share the costs. It would save us some money from our 330 consultation line. Right now this year, we carry 21,000 in there for reading consultative support and we would be able to back away from that. So it's a new cost, but we'd also have some offset savings in our 330 consultation line.
It's also an example of building capacity, right Patty?
Absolutely.
Did you talk about that in, in the school?
Absolutely. So just, Orton Gillingham might not be familiar to everybody. It is a very structured approach. An Orton Gillingham certified fellow has gone through extensive instruction classes, practicums, observations, a multitude of hours to get there. Orton Gillingham addresses all components of reading. In the decoding, it looks at all aspects of word reading, morphology, syllabication, roots, prefixes, suffixes, all the word reading skills students need. Looks at the spelling in all of those areas as well. It brings in comprehension. It actually brings in written expression. So it's a very, very strong, comprehensive program.
We have a couple of questions, if you don't mind. Shoot.
On this one, do you want to?
Yep.
Yeah, so, so, so I'll have to ask, so just, how many, how many students in the, in the other districts will be receiving instruction for this program? Because I'm, I'm adding it up. We have nine students and it looks like it's, we're splitting it half. So is it safe to assume there's 18 students program-wide? Or is it, is, is this more of a programic design person rather than a actual instruction person? Just checking for proportional equity? And then does the 4204, that includes benefits in that and they're in one district or the other and have we accounted for that?
Yes, please. The benefits part or not?
Yeah. So the distribution by district was done in consultation with Jen Delkani from an Eastern Reading District perspective, it was on her consultations with Patty. So the apportion was done across the three districts, it's .5 here, .3 Reading, .2 Eastern, which was based on proportional sense of need. Whether it's exactly twice nine to get to 18, I'm not certain. In aggregate across the three, but I knew, do know that it was their judgment that that was a good apportionment in terms of the person's time. So each of the three budgets carry a proportional amount of the dollars associated with it. Now the dollars are salary only. They're not medical or anything like. They're not medical or anything like that. And we can probably spend more time in another budget discussion about that approach.
It's probably hard to break the number down, Mike, because it really depends on level of support that the student needs. Some students would be particularly in K through, not K, I'm going to go, particularly in grades two through five, you might have somebody who needs that every single day. And the level that they're at, it literally is going to be one-to-one instruction, where sometimes we're going to be able to put kids in a small group.
I think my question was more just how it's happening.
I understand. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
How we're splitting it.
If we're paying 50% of the person, we should be getting 50% of the time.
Yes. I agree with that.
All right, we can move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
The transition services, as I said, we do have a retirement. Our transition coordinator has been with us since 1999. Will be retiring at the end of the school year. Transition services have been always a part of IDEA, but with each reauthorization, there have been more requirements. Again, Connecticut often goes beyond the federal requirements, and through our regulations, we have additional things that we need to require. So that position has really, the requirements have just really grown over time. Again, we look at this as an opportunity to continue building that in-house capacity, to continue to provide that education benefit here. So we would be looking to move one of our 3E teachers who has been, who has completed all the required, I don't want to say, who has completed numerous transition courses in professional development, to move her from the 3E program over into that transition coordinator position. We feel like the one lead teacher next year in 3E will be able to manage the student IEPs in that program successfully. That would allow us to take advantage of this retirement and reassign her to that position. Some of the services that they provide for students, again, in the IDEA 2004 reauthorization, which believe it or not, still is the last reauthorization, they really helped define what transition services are. They talked about it as being one that should have some direct instruction, which is something that a certified teacher will be able to provide for us, not always just consultative or indirect services. They mandated that you have at least two of the seven core transition areas incorporated into each and every IEP. Connecticut has gone further. In 2013, they came out with the Transition Bill of Rights. In 2019, they implemented that students with autism need to have transition planning begin the IEP after they turn 13. So we feel like it's a very busy, vibrant position that we'd like to take advantage of that switch over for next year. We would anticipate that position being able to do everything that's in the current column as well as expanding the job to include things such as case management, direct instruction, direct supervision and assessment of students, and working with Gina in the administrative team on the mastery-based diploma requirements, which we feel like, again, we could be really providing some super, super opportunities for students in-house to really enhance their post-secondary outcomes.
So is there any contractual savings due to the switch from the teacher from 3E to being a transitional, or is there an increase? In other words, we're, it seems that we're repurposing a teacher.
Yes.
Maybe a bad way of saying it, but teacher who we feel is qualified to take on those additional duties. Is that a higher-level position with a higher salary? Is that kind of a straight move across? Is it, is there any stipend? Is there any designation?
It would be a straight move across for that teacher where they are on salary step. It would just be a straight move across. There's no additional pay or additional stipends or anything. It would be the savings of the transition coordinator who retires salary because we're not replacing it. We're, as you said, repurposing or reassigning.
But we're not saving that if you're putting a new person into that role?
Right. That's why I didn't put that up as a, right, you're moving somebody over. You're not, we're replacing the person who's retired by using somebody who's already in our, in our contract, in our salary line.
At the same compensation level, you're moving across into the other role?
It's.
Are we saving anything because the current transition coordinator was at a higher salary?
No, the current transition coordinator was at a lower salary. The one that.
But you're reducing by one, 3E.
Yeah.
Right. So you're down a person and down the salary.
Right.
Right.
So there is a reduction of one position, and then through attrition, you're losing your transition coordinator, and you're moving one person from 3E to that coordinator's position.
So we're essentially saving.
So you're still saving the position of the 3E teacher.
But we're not replacing the cost of the non-certified transition specialists that we're losing.
Okay. And, but we're also gaining more from the position in this opportunity. So this side, I think, is important because currently, what you have is what a non-certified para is able to bring to the position. The laws have changed the opportunity to be current. And Patty, I think you did check as far as, do other districts deal with this with a certified position or a non-certified position?
Across the board, it's a certified position. That's the recommendation from the, certified with special ed background is preferred.
And then with that certified, you can pick up the case management and the direct instruction and.
Correct.
Okay, so now it's capacity building? Because we're, in essence, we're upgrading that position to a more qualified person to take on more tasks. So we're redefining that role. So if, you know, just, if the numbers changed and the 3E program went up the next year, and you were going to shift it back, your new position has greater qualifications than you currently had, so you would, so it's, we are kind of.
Yes.
Building capacity.
We did look, we did look down the road at the 3E before we made that recommendation as well, to make sure that we were going to be comfortable with this for several years, and we are. It is, it is building capacity. It is also literally, to me, recognizing the rigors of the position and the demands of that position as well. It's, it's truly, I don't know how, I don't know how a transition coordinator gets their job done in 40 hours because there's so, there is so much work that you do between going to transition programs, liaison with outside agencies, work with BRS, DDS, DEMIS, all those positions, meeting with parents, working with families. It is a very, it's a, it's a very, very busy position, and I think we're looking at actually the realities of what that job entails nowadays.
Great. Can we move on then to the out-of-district students or excess? If others have questions on the transition, this keeps us moving.
No.
Yeah.
So looking at our out-of-district students, we have, we're anticipating 16 out-of-district placements next year. Seven, seven of those are in grades nine through 12, the nine in transition, age-appropriate transition programs. And transportation will be required for 13 out of those 16 students.
Is that flat versus last year, or has it gone up?
It is less than last year. Right now, we are at 19. So it is less. We are, we are exiting a number of students from out-of-district placements this year, eight, but we are also picking up a few from our incoming freshman class.
And if it's possible, can you provide us with the, like a chart that you've done in the past so that we know at what point students will age out so that we, because I know we had a big class last year that aged out. And so I'd just like to know whether the nine is a big uptick from where we are, or whether it's pretty constant and where they are along the lines as far as their ages.
Yeah. It just, the transition program, those 18 to 21 transition programs, as I've said before, we, they are very cost-effective. It would be, with the small numbers and the diverse needs we have, I calculated it out, it would still cost us more to provide, right now, to provide those 18 to, an 18 to 21 program here at Barlow than it is for the transition programs in the community. They're still very cost-effective. Looking at our next account, the 1211, which is where we carry our excess cost grant money. I am assuming a 70% reimbursement level. I'm very comfortable with that for next year. You can see our history there. We dropped down because of good reasons. We're keeping students in districts. We're providing appropriate services that are less costly. We're managing those costs, and because of that, we will have less that we need to request for excess cost reimbursement. Our threshold this year was over $106,000. So that's 106 that we're not paying upfront, and it's not 30 cents on every dollar after that we're paying. So the good news, the number is down. The bad news is it's less overall money back into the budget, but back to the good news again, we're not spending that money upfront. In our 1127 account, which is our special services, that's where we carry that hospitalization or homebound funds. We're looking at a decrease. And again, it's, that is a line that's very hard to predict, so we base that on our historical payments over the last two or three years. Our speech-language services, we have a small increase in there, and it's completely due to contractual issues. There's nothing of note changing in there.
So again, back to our, to our requests, adding the one certified FTE to staff to Bridge Services, adding the .5 Orton Gillingham certified teacher, and reassigning the one teacher from 3E program to certified transition coordinator. We just feel like this is building capacity for us. It improves our services, at the same time, helping us bend those costs like we've been trying to do.
It might be good for you during budget time to add on there that you're reassigning one 3E teacher, because you're having, you have the add-ons, but you don't have the corresponding reduction, which is probably important to know.
It says reassign.
Yeah, reassigning the one.
It says reassigning it to something different, but you're still saving a salary. So I think it's good to articulate it that way.
Thank you.
So again, to take a look, our total budget actually is, so we went down by the, about half a million last year, which was a reduction of about 9%. And this year, heading into next year, we're looking at another $47,000 down. Again, good decision-making, trying to keep students here, trying to build capacity, just heading in the right direction.
Is it fair to just, if I were to, somebody were asking a question.
Sure.
Grocery store, is it fair to say that even though we're adding 1.5 employees to our students, our teachers, that we're still saving money because ultimately, we're in sourcing costs? Is that fair?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely. That would be the perfect thing to say.
All right.
So the bottom line, as Patty was saying, the excess costs, we don't get that piece back. But that's something we don't have control over. What we do have control over is our 1,200 line, our 1127 line, and our 2150 line. Those are the lines that we need to focus on.
And those are, those are all about services. And so we're, we believe we're providing improved services. We're keeping students in district. We're providing good educational benefit for every student, and we're doing it with a little bit less money. We're doing it cost-effectively.
So we share this slide in full transparency, because when you, when you do factor in the excess costs, we actually are going up by the 165,534. But like we said before, the one that we have control over is the middle column. We don't have control over the excess costs. We don't have control over the state, the grants.
Except in the sense that we have control over the excess cost in that we are not making those very costly out-of-district placements. We're keeping kids in district.
And the potential new structure is not in here. This is just staff, right? So the, okay, that would be administrative cost, right?
Oh, the potential, you're talking the assistant.
If you have the district-wide assistant super, that's not in here.
Yes, that's not. It doesn't, it wouldn't change our budget per se? So that's not in this presentation? This is strictly the services that the students need. And those budget lines for, and for those of you new to the board, when you get your budget in February, those lines and numbers that Patty and Dave are rattling off will make a lot more sense when you can find those lines. It would be nice if there was one line and it just said special education, but so maybe if those costs are broken down in different areas of budget, it makes more sense when you're looking at a budget book. But we think it's important to present this work before you actually get to the budget because this is such a large chunk. Thank you, Patty and Dave.
You're welcome.
So just, I'm not going to ask you a million questions, just give you comments so that maybe heading into budget time, things to think about. And thank you for this very thorough presentation. I think it was really great. Just for me, your first slide about students with disabilities in education reasonably calculated to enable them to make progress. I'd like to better understand what that means because it's kind of vague, and so, and not for tonight, but just for down the road. And the other item that I was curious about was so, we have a bump in 2021, 2022, and our percentage numbers, IEP percentage numbers are going up, but then, would it be a fair assumption to say that they're going to continue to escalate based upon the numbers we're seeing K to eight? So in other words, there's a continual rise there, and it goes to 17.5 in 2022, 23. Is that going up to 19, or is that gonna?
It's hard to predict.
I know it's hard to predict. I'm just saying, based on, and then, the biggest question that I have is, as we move forward, because obviously, the board is going to be faced with the challenges of right sizing and making some difficult choices. Can you kind of disseminate some of this information to articulate whether or not you can foresee a certain year where we're going to have an increase, an extreme increase, a significant increase in costs? In other words, those are all based upon individual disabilities, we know, because it seems like now we're, this year, we're graduating students with disabilities that seem to be in that 15 and a half plus number. There's many students there. So it's changing the, you know, the dispersment of students. So do we see a cohort coming that's going to swing back just so that we're kind of out in front, that we, you know, again, not without divulging any, any confident jelly, but just to say 2024, 25 is going to be challenging, or, you know, there's a risk with a certain year. I think that would be helpful. And then the last thing, I guess, would be, I think for the public to understand, we are saving significant amount of money by having programs in-house which help us to avoid outplacements. There's a certain associated savings related to that. But then, throughout the presentation, there are other areas where we are, capacity building is the best way to use it. So how much of the savings are we using on capacity building? It would be something that would be useful, I think, for us so that we know. Because I'm not saying. Because I, I'm not saying that it's not necessary, it's necessary. I'm just saying it would be helpful, I think, to be able to articulate, because I think the programs are saving significant amount of money, and it kind of gets hidden when you, you know, get the overall presentation, you don't really see that we're saving, you know, $400,000 or whatever through those programs. Thank you.
Another question. Along a similar line, I'm just trying to understand, not necessarily the 2021, but the 2122, right, where we go up 13 students in the IEP. Again, so it kind of Mike's question, right? We're building capacity, so some of the moves we're doing with bridges and some of those things, are we going to see a big spike in 2021 because of, 2122 because of these extra students coming in, or because we now have bridges and we have another transition coordinator and so forth? Are, that capacity building, is it going to help level out our costs so we're not going to see a big jump? Next year doesn't seem like too much of an increase, right? You're down 46K.
Right.
I'm more worried about the year after that where, you know, we're, we're bumping up instead of three students, we're bumping up 13 students.
So just really quickly, and maybe just to relieve the word, the easiest program for us to, like, look at and make longer-term predictions is the BASIS program, because those, those are your probably, you know, some of your most expensive in district students.
Patty, BASIS?
BASIS is our version of our 3E program at our, at our feeder schools and both of our K-8 systems. So unless somebody moves into district that you don't know about and/or the opposite, somebody leaves and, and moves out of district, those are students that are easily, I, those are students who are going to be identified probably most often coming out of birth to three, so you're following them for a long period of time, so there's not a lot of change. The other numbers, when I look at those presentations, I feel comfortable with saying those are your, those would be your high marks. If those students go up any higher, I'd be like shocked. The K-8 systems, they work hard to exit those students, so that's where everything is right now. It's so hard to predict. If there are 30 IEP students in our, in the grade four cohort, I can imagine that there wouldn't be some students exited before they hit grade nine because they're working to that same level of independence as us. Will they get new referrals? Of course, we all get them. But I think the numbers I've given you, I really believe that those are, those are the high marks. I don't think they would go any hi, any higher than that. I can put together in that-
No, that's helpful. I, I think that's very helpful. Like you said, I just-
Yeah.
Other questions? All right. Thank you. Very helpful, very thorough. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I've put a lot of effort into that, so thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we then, our next time doing a time check, are we, I don't know, we have another 40 slides for the next one, or?
We, we-
That's one pretty thorough.
It's a very thorough, it represents over a year of work. We can, we're ready to present it. I don't think this is our, our best time of day, to be honest with you. I also just noticed that I believe they shut the heat off at 10:30, so it's getting also a little colder in here. And my suggestion with, with your, your judgment would be to, to table this to a time you have more capacity, and we can give it a look, but that's your decision.
Well, I know, I know we were looking for item F to table that.
Sure.
So, so I know we have that off the table. I'll just, you know, check in with the fellow board members that will mean we'll have to have another meeting here relatively soon to cover this topic if everyone wants to table it for now.
Is there anything I'd ask? If, if there's anything that the, the team would want the board to comment on specifically today to provide more guidance? Because I, I'm slightly concerned with the time. I know, we're not at our best either, so I think it's that witching hour, but is there any input that would be helpful at this point? Or anything that we should look at now that we can think about and maybe we can-
Give us parts of the presentation-
I was going to say, do you have handouts that we can look at?
I'd have a hard-
Oh, you never like to do that. I know the way that you can't see the learn, so we can explain.
I just, I'd, I'd have a hard time because what, what we'd like to present is the, the look and the work that has been going on by the team in front of you. And it's, it's difficult to say, well, here, just look at this and take it out of context when you don't see how we, we arrived where we are. So the presentation that we'd like to present to you are the reductions that we believe we can make because of enrollment going down. It is not a budget presentation, so it's different from what you just heard here. It really is almost a two-parter of looking at the historic enrollments and the work that was done by especially Jen and Julie, looking at those staffing documents over the years. Where do we see enrollment going and where do we see reductions that could be made? But then we also went a step further and said, if we were going to continue to reduce, what might be the programmatic areas that we would look at? And there's not one. We didn't pick one discipline and said, here, we're just going to look at this. We really looked at every discipline and said, here are kind of enrollment-driven reductions, and here are programmatic reductions.
So, Jen, if I could just, like, let's not spend 20 minutes talking about a 45-minute presentation. You are going to want to have a solid hour and a quarter. You're going to want to let them walk you through it. There's a, it's a dense presentation, but it is delivering what you've been asking for. How does enrollment impact each department? How does that translate into staffing decisions? And then what the administration's going to say is, based on what we know about next year, we think we can do this, but anything beyond that, they're going to need the, the board to guide them on that. So I would think it's, this is actually even worth saying, schedule another meeting. I don't know if you need to make the whole leadership team come, but, but I, I, I wouldn't want you to wait until your February meeting.
Because that's when we're getting the budget.
That's when you're getting the budget.
You need to see this so you can have some time to think about the implications. Your, your February meeting is on the 18th, so-
And then the 5th and the 12th are the budget workouts.
Yeah. So looking at-
The trouble is, you have a, probably a Reading meeting on the 4th and an Easton meeting on the 11th, correct?
So calendar-wise, this Thursday?
Yeah.
The 30th?
Uh, I have something there, but I'll move it because I never have a meeting. Or, or we can do the 6th.
I'm just saying, yeah, we need to go either the 30th, 4th, 5th.
There's a Reading Board workshop on the 6th.
On the 6th, so we can't do that.
About the 13th.
There's an Easton, Easton meeting on the 30th.
What are you guys planning all these meetings for? Do you understand me? I think you got the 30th or the 20th.
The 20th.
The 20th.
I'm sorry, the 30th of, of February, and then the next-
The 30th of January.
Sorry, anyway. And then, then, then after that, it's up to you guys.
I think we do the 30th.
I'll, I'll reschedule if that's, yeah, I can do that.
We could do the 30th.
30th of January?
As if, as if, two days from now.
Yeah, as if Thursday.
Okay.
As if Thursday, as if two days from now.
You guys don't have any plans on Thursday, do you?
I changed.
It's Tom's fault. He said it.
Thursday, the 30th at 7:30, and, and am I correct to assume this would be the only thing we're doing?
I, I, yeah, I would do the 6th, so I-
So we have three hours.
Unless you wanted to do two. Seal of my literacy, if you want to bring that back on, otherwise we'll table it till the regular meeting later in the month.
It could be tabled till the regular meeting, the seal of my literacy, and we'll just plan on doing this on Thursday.
So, yes, we have to post that tomorrow. Agenda.
Yeah, it has to be.
It has to be posted tomorrow by 7:30.
Yeah, so we will post, so just to recap, so Thursday, this will be a special meeting, 7:30 PM here. Thursday, the 30th, and right sizing, visible thinking, and I don't, can we-
Don't go crazy with minutes and stuff like that. You can do it at the regular meeting.
Yeah, we can pass the minutes on to the regular meeting.
It's, yeah.
So I don't think we'll need, like, a lot of other, we won't do student comment and all the other, so we'll, we'll just keep it to the one discussion for right sizing.
Okay.
Good for the board members?
I think that makes sense.
All right.
I think that makes sense.
All right. All right, so we don't need to vote on that. We'll just move through. So we're going to, then, just again, to recap, we're tabling the right sizing, visible thinking, cost analysis projections, and moving it to Thursday, to a special meeting that will be posted tomorrow, Thursday, January 30th, at 7:30 PM here in this location.
And the right sizing topic needs, is it budgetary in nature as well?
What will happen is moving-
I'm just asking because does Scott need to be there? Does Stephanie do? I just find, trying to be-
It's not a financial, it's not a financial meeting, so-
I'm just saying, and whoever needs to be here to-
I think it is curriculum.
Okay, so-
It's not-
Maybe Scott gets a pass and Stephanie, no, I don't, I don't know. I'm just-
Okay. All right, and then we'll reconvene then. All right, so let's just move on quickly to close out then our items. Next one is public comment. We still have a few members of the public here. Any comments? No, all right, board member comment, next slide. Any comments from board members? All right, then we'll go to the last item, adjournment.
Go to adjourn, 10:53.
Second, so Mike, Cheryl, in favor, all right. All right, we are now adjourned at 10:53.
Look, you got it out before 11 o'clock. That's good.
Thank you very much for your consideration in moving the meeting. I think we'll do it justice on Thursday.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you everybody for hanging in there.
Thank you.